We will start with our invocation, Mr. Administrator. When you are prepared, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, as we continue our journey around your Son and we go experience the change in seasons, we are reminded of your presence in our lives each and every day. We're grateful for that presence and we invite your presence here today as we go about this meeting. We ask in every way your presence in our lives each and every day. We ask all this in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
That brings us to the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next, excuse me, commissioners, the next regularly scheduled business or meeting of the commission will be a business session on Wednesday, September the 29th, beginning at 6:00 P.M.
Thank you. There are no honorary resolutions listed this evening, this afternoon. There are no discussion items. There are no public hearings listed, and there is, there are no items on the consent agenda. That brings us to our regular agenda. Now, before we get started, I just want to point out, I see a number of people who may not have been at our meetings before. This is our work session. When we go through regular agenda, the decision we will be making is to whether to put it on consent or regular agenda for next week. So that will be the decision point that we are making, and then at that point, at our, at our business session, we will then have our final vote up and down, which gives the public a week to kind of see what we've done and to make any additional comments. So I just want to make sure everybody has the expectations in line for what we're doing. And the last thing I want to mention, as long as I've kind of interrupted us here, when we get to a point to where we come up to an item that you would care to comment on, if you do care to comment, please go to the podium, make sure that the little green light is lit, green. Please speak, identify yourself, speak into the microphone, and just kind of line up there, that way I'll have an idea of how many people are wanting to speak on a particular issue as we approach that issue. With that, Mr. Administrator, we will take up our regular agenda, beginning at 2021-263.
Commissioners, 2021-263 is a request to approve an inter-agency cooperative agreement with the Odessa Police Department, and Captain Agderian from the sheriff's office is here for comment.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This request is a, another one of the surplus equipment requests that we've kind of dealt with this year as we are attempting to shore up redundancies in our commodities items. This particular one is a request that we have received from Odessa Police Department for three radio repeaters that we no longer use and cannot use in our vehicles, and they have a need for. So these repeaters assist in improving radio communications, and since we cannot use them, rather than throw them away, they're still in working order for an agency that has a need for that equipment, and I would like to request that we be able to donate that to them.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
No, no questions, but thank you to Captain Agderian.
Appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Very well. Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak on this issue before we go forward? Okay. Would the commission, what would be the consensus of the commission, regular or consent agenda for next week?
I'm good.
I as well.
Very well. 2021-263 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-264. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-264 is another request to approve an inter-agency cooperative agreement, this time with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, and Captain Agderian has further comments.
Please proceed.
I failed to identify myself the first time, so Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office, I know. This request is similar nature as the first. This is a request from the Carroll County Sheriff's Office that has a need for, I believe it is, the total of 66 radios that operate on a frequency that we no longer use. And as you know, we've come to you recently regarding a radio encryption request. We have to upgrade to that new system. We can no longer use these, and once again, rather than send them to the trash or to surplus, we would like to see them used in public safety.
I think that's great, that another, another agency has the ability to make some additional use of these, this equipment. Any comments or questions from the commission?
No, thank you.
Very well. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. This is similar. Am I right in assuming that this would also be a consent item?
Yes.
Very well. 2021-264 will go on consent for next week. That brings us to 2021-265. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-265 is to, is a request to approve a scope and fee proposal for design and planning work with Cook, Platt, and Strobel, and the Bibb engineers, architects, and constructors. This would be relative to the upcoming law enforcement training area. Captain Agderian is here for further comment.
Please proceed.
Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request to, for signature of a contract with the, the company that's going to be doing the site planning work and the initial, just the initial investigation into what are the environmental impacts? What do we need to do to make this, this law enforcement resource center happen? It's, it's, it's a site review, and so Cook, Platt, and Strobel, I think I said that correctly, Platt, sorry, we just call them CFS. In any case, they have presented us with a, an initial quote in the amount of about $94,000 to do their work and contract with their subcontractor to make sure that this project is set to go when we are able to secure funding to, to build.
Well, this is something that has been talked about for some time, and I think there's a, there's a great need, at least in my opinion, that we, that we have this asset in place as soon as we can. So I'm happy to see that we are able to make progress, and certainly the sheriff's department has, has led the way in making sure that we could start down this road that we need to go.
Thank you for your support on that.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
No, just to echo Commissioner Nolte's perspective on this, I agree.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm good, thank you.
Very well. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. This does involve the expenditure of funds, so I'm thinking this would be appropriate for regular agenda. Is that the consensus? It is. I see head nods. Okay, so 2021-265 will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-266. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-266 is a request to approve a customer relationship agreement with Aramark Refreshment Services. This is another request from the sheriff's office, and I will turn the floor back over to Captain Agderian.
Please proceed.
Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is an interesting request. I had to do a lot of research to determine whether or not we needed to bring this to you, and it's not the dollar amount, it's the fact that it's a contract. And as we know, the sheriff's office cannot endet the county to any expenditure of funds. The reason that I, that I went down this road, and the way, the reason the sheriff's office is asking for your signature on this agreement is that we are trying to centralize our purchasing and become more transparent and be able to show a dollar amount for everything we spend. And one of my tasks was to look at the efficiency of some of our purchasing. And one of the things I noticed is that we've got about four different people that have to have individual orders placed for things like bottled water service, which is important. It might not seem like, 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 it might not seem like it on the surface, but I guarantee when you have people that are working 12-hour, 18-hour shifts in detention that cannot leave the building, having access to fresh water and a cup of coffee is really important. And for the dollar amount assigned to this contract, I believe that we should provide that. So the contract with Aramark is, it establishes a minimum monthly purchase. The difference, though, is that one person would be managing this account, and so the dollar expenditure is not going to be very much different than what we are currently spending for coffee service, bottled water, except in this case, we won't be hauling in bottles of water anymore. We're going to hook it to a water line, so all we have to do is rent the filter, and that frees up some space. There's just a lot of reasons, a lot of thought that's gone into what I thought was just a really easy, hey, Amy, can you figure out the coffee situation? So I'm here today to ask for your consideration of signing this contract or this purchasing agreement with Aramark.
Well, certainly coffee resonates with me very soundly, as long, certainly with at least one other commissioner, I'm sure. This, it sounds also, apart from the transparency, that this will introduce a, an additional level of efficiency and perhaps free up some hours to be used in other areas.
Absolutely. So by creating one account that we can manage this, I should be able to stand before you, the sheriff, or citizens, anybody who asks, and be able to say, this is what we've spent. And there's only one person having to deal with it. Additionally, as far as the service that we've received, there have been supply chain shortages, and so it's frustrating when we want to provide these things, but we can't because our current supplier doesn't have access to them. Aramark is an international corporation and has much more buying power than some of the other, some other, I guess, providers. And so when looking into this, we decided that it was better to make sure that we could provide the items at a cost-effective way and be able to be transparent about how much that service is costing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Thompson?
No, no, no questions today, but I, I love more transparency, and I may actually be that other person that likes that coffee, so I understand.
Okay.
No worries.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just that I appreciate the explanation, sounds like a good, efficient way to be doing this, and even the bottled water going to, attaching to the water line and doing it through a filter, seems like it makes a lot of sense to me, and as Commissioner Nolte mentioned, fan of, of having coffee, so I understand that need for, for our great sheriff's office employees, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
I didn't mean to ignore your coffee cup, I just didn't see it before, so yes, all three commissioners enjoy their coffee. What would be the consensus of the commission on this, regular or is our consent?
It seems like maybe regular would be the way to go.
I think since it's the expenditures of monies, that yes, regular agenda is appropriate. That brings us to 21 ordinance, excuse me, 2021 ordinance 40. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 ordinance 40 is to re, request to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year. This is again from the sheriff's office, and for the final episode of the Captain Agderian Show, I turn it over to.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. Senate Bill 53 was passed in July of this year. That bill provides feminine hygiene products for female inmates at no charge to them. When the money for these feminine hygiene products in the amount of about $9,533 was received by the county, we had to create a new expenditure line to make those funds available for our detention staff to make the purchases. So working with Auditor Hurlbert, we, we found a way to make those funds available to detention. So created a new revenue line and a new expenditure line, and we just are asking for permission or your approval to reappropriate those funds for expenditure.
Very well. Any additional comments or questions? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, no comments, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none. This does, this does have the expenditure of money, so I think that perhaps a regular agenda would be the proper place for this. Is that the consensus of the commission?
Sounds good to me, thanks.
That's fine.
Very well. 2021 ordinance 40 will go on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021. Thank you, Captain. That brings us to 2021-248. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-248 is a request to approve agreements for WebEx capability upgrades throughout the court system from audio acoustics, and Representative the Circuit Clerk is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
With our, with our experience with COVID-19.
Oh, go ahead and identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry? Oh, my name is Denise Banning.
Thank you. We, the reason I say that is we have audio recordings going, so that that way people can identify.
Oh, okay.
Please proceed.
With our experience with COVID-19 through the court system, we had very limited access to WebEx, and that is, we use for folks, keeping them from coming to court, basically. And so we were, like I said, we were very limited on the capabilities. And so what we're requesting is that all of our divisions are covered with the capability of WebEx in case we ever have a lockdown in the future or whatever. We do not know where, you know, what COVID is going to do in the future, so we want to be prepared. And I have Sean with me from our IT department, if y'all have any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none. This, once again, involves the expenditure of some funds, so yes, Mr. Administrator?
Commissioner, I would also just point out that this is, a request also includes asking for access to COVID response funds from the American Rescue Plan, which I think is a very appropriate thing for us to note, and it, it does involve expense, but it's expense that comes from a different source.
I think, yeah, in fact, I had made a note on, on my agenda that it would be most likely an appropriate expenditure of ARPA money. Was wanting to make sure of that, but it seems to me that that's, it, it seems rather an obvious thing, but I always like to, before we spend money, make sure we've got our, our, our facts completely straight. Thank you for that, that notation.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, since it is the expenditure of money, a regular session, a regular agenda?
Let's do regular, yeah.
That's fine.
Very well. 2021-248 will appear on next week's regular agenda. Thank you very much. That brings us to the next part of our regular agenda. In this case, we have items that are related to one another. Mr. Administrator, if we could go ahead and take up 2021-249, 250, and 251?
Commissioners, 2021-249 and 2021-250 and 2021-251 are all requests to approve a subdivision from Planning and Zoning, Dollhouse Farms, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Jones from Planning and Zoning for further comments.
Please proceed.
This is Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a rezoning preliminary and final plat for a subdivision named Dollhouse Farms. I have it pulled up on the screen. This is a very unique property. It's roughly 90 acres, and it has three existing houses on it now that were built years and years ago. Our current code would not allow three houses on one parcel, but since they were built under or before previous codes, this property has three houses. So this is the property here highlighted in green. The proposal is to divide it into three lots. There would be one large lot that would not be part of the plat that meets an exemption to the plating requirements, and then we're showing Lot 1 and Lot 2, which are five-plus acre lots. So really, this corrects an error or inconsistency by getting each house onto a separate property and would allow those three properties to be sold separately. You can see there is a bit of floodplain that runs through the property, but the houses are located up towards the road and out of the floodplain. This is 210 Highway to the south, and Scott Avenue runs in front of the property. It's located in a rural low-density tier, which allows five-plus acre lots, as long as an agricultural land preservation is included. The applicant has included the ALP area for each of the two lots that we're plating. This case was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. There are five rezoning criteria, which any rezoning case includes, that requires the review and decision-making bodies consider those five rezoning criteria. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. As I stated, there is floodplain and a blue line stream that run north to south through the property. The applicant, and I'll zoom in here a little bit, but the applicant had proposed to put a 30-foot ingress egress easement along this north property line of Lot 1, which would give him a secondary access to the back acreage. The highway department looked at this access point and determined that it did not meet the site distance. So one of the conditions that you'll see in Exhibit A that we're requesting is that that 30-foot ingress egress be removed from the plat since it's not a safe access point. We did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this proposal, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning preliminary and final plat with the two conditions that you can see in Exhibit A. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Does the commission have any questions, Mr. Jones? Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
If the applicant is present, and this, by the way, this applies to all the planning and zoning. Certainly, if the applicant wishes to, they can make comment. It is not required, it's absolutely your option, but certainly we would welcome any comments that you, you would have, so don't, don't feel obligated, but certainly we would want to hear from you if you have something you'd like to add.
I'm George Handy. I, I understand the conditions, and I don't have any further comments. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from any other members of the public on, on these three items? As we go forward on this and the others that have to do with, with planning and zoning, we will look for a, either a regular or consent agenda placement, and also we will want to discuss whether or not we check, there's two boxes on it, whether we check approved or denied. So we'll go ahead and open up the discussion on that. Does anybody have any other questions now that you've heard? Mr. Jones?
No, no questions. Sounds like a pretty straightforward and controversial approval here. unanimous from planning and zoning, so I'm comfortable doing it as consent.
I'll go ahead and make a recommendation, then, that we mark approved on these resolutions, and that we put it, since it does, does not seem to have any controversy or expenditure of money, put it on for next meeting's consent agenda. Is that acceptable? By the way, just for the benefit of the applicant, by putting it on consent, consent items are bundled together in one large group, and they are voted on as a group of items, and it'll apply to all the consent agenda items. Those can be removed by a commissioner at any time, up until we take it up, but certainly you're always welcome to be here. This would have been the more important of the two meetings, but certainly anytime you want to be here, whether you have business before, so not you're more than welcome to, to attend. So with that, if there is no objection, we will put 2021-249, 250, and 251 on for consent with the box marked approved. Thank you. That brings us to 2021-252, 253, and 254. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-252 and 2021-253, 2021-254, again, are requests to, for a sub, to approve a subdivision. I hope I say this right, Cramell Acres, and I'm sure Mr. Jones will correct me if I said that wrong, and I turn the floor over to him for further comments.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager, and that was perfect. Thank you. So this is a rezoning preliminary and final plat application for Cramell Acres. This is a two-lot subdivision. You can see I've got it highlighted here with Lot 1 and Lot 2. It's located east of Liberty, off of Missouri City Road. It's not within a mile of any local jurisdiction. Want to zoom in on the two lots. It's roughly 30 acres, and the proposal is to subdivide it into a 20-plus acre lot that has an existing home, and then Lot 2 would be an eight-to-nine acre lot that does not have a home. The granddaughter of the current owner would like to be able to build a house on Lot 2 in the blue there. So just going from one lot to two lots with possibility of one additional house. This is located in a rural low-density tier, again, which allows a five-plus acre lot. The lot number two would be required to have the agricultural land preservation. Lot 1 does not, since it's 20-plus acres. This case, again, was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. It has the same five rezoning criteria as with any rezoning case. The applicant received all their outside agency approvals. There is a small electric line easement that runs across this far back corner of the property, and by far the biggest discussion point on this case was there is a 20-foot strip of land just east of this property. So Lot 2 ends right here, and then the next 20 feet is a strip that serves as a shared driveway, and I'll show you why as I zoom out. Once my map updates here, there are three or four multiple houses back in here that use this 20-foot strip as their access to their properties. There was a lot of discussion at Planning and Zoning Commission about the difference between an easement and right-of-way. This is an easement, so it just allows people to use that 20-foot strip to access their houses that are in behind this lot. It is, I cannot stress this enough, it is not part of what we're plating today. Actually, this property owner owns that 20 feet, but by having an easement, these property owners are allowed to use that 20 feet for access. But there was quite a bit of discussion about that at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It actually generated so much discussion that the county clerk called me and asked the difference between an easement and right-of-way. So, but when we build on Lot 2, they will have a separate driveway, and they will not have access to that 20-foot strip. We did have some adjacent property owners attend the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I would not call it opposition. Nobody opposed the subdivision of this into two lots. They just had questions about what this was, and in addition, in the Clay County Highway Department's comments, the highway department had requested 30 feet of right-of-way along this east property line in case any of this large acreage would be developed in the future. That would allow the opportunity for a road to be put in there, but the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed that and decided not to include that as one of the conditions. So there is not 30 feet of right-of-way here. There is just that 20-foot easement for those folks to use it as a driveway. So that was the main discussion point on this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning preliminary and final plat with the two conditions you can see in Exhibit A, and the second condition has already been handled by the applicant, so the only outstanding condition is some changes to the plat. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just to kind of recap a little bit, any action, the actions contemplated in these three resolutions will not impact the ability for the adjacent property owners to have access to their properties. This will, will not deter their ability to access their properties. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I realize that you had gone through it in some deal, and I appreciate that, but I thought it was a good idea to come back and just kind of make a simple declarative statement related to that and make sure that that was indeed accurate. Is there any comment from the, or question from the commission? Please proceed, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. For Mr. Jones, so the 30-foot right-of-way request from the highway department, did Planning and Zoning have state reasons why they decided not to include that? Number one, and then number two, do we know how the highway department feels about, about that? Are they okay with that?
Yeah, so I think there were two reasons. So first reason- So, first reason was per, for planning and zoning issues, the county's divided into three tiers. This is in the rural low-density tier, and typically that's a section of the county that we don't see development take place because it's so far outside city limits, and our current comprehensive plan does not call for interior-streated subdivisions in this tier of the county. So, I think that was one factor, and the secondary factor was I had a couple Planning and Zoning Commissioners, I believe they said they actually drove by and they know the topography of this land that's landlocked back in there, and they didn't think development, even if the city got out that far, would ever occur. So, those were the two reasons I felt they took that 30 feet of right-of-way out there. I did talk to the transportation manager out at highway department, and they honestly didn't have any concerns about it, about it being removed.
They did not have any concerns?
They did not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, thank you.
With that, if the, if they would like to do so, if the applicant would like to make any kind of a statement related to these resolutions, they're certainly welcome to do so at this time. Okay. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make comment on this issue? Seeing none, there doesn't seem to be very much other controversy attached to this. I'll go ahead and recommend that we put these three items on for consent with the box approved checked.
Sounds good.
Very well. That 2021-252, 253, 254 will appear on next week's consent agenda with the box approved checked. Thank you very much. That brings us to 2021-255, 256, and 257. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-255, 2021-256, and 2121-257, request to approve a subdivision, Scarborough Ranch, and Mr. Jones from Planning and Zoning has further comments.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So, again, this is a rezoning preliminary and final plat for a two-lot subdivision located off of 162nd Street, and it's just west of Plattsburgh Road, so it's north of 92 and west of Plattsburgh Road. It is part of a larger, roughly 120-acre parcel, and the proposal is to subdivide two roughly five-acre lots out of the 120 acres. The whole 120 acres is highlighted in green, and then you have the two five-acre lots on either side. The proposal is to allow one house to be built on each of the lots. It's for a family member, two daughters, to be able to have their own lot and build a house on each lot. This is in a unique area, it's actually right in between two different tiers, the natural resources tier and the urban services tier. The natural resources tier allows a five-plus acre lot, the urban services tier allows a 10-plus acre lot, but since it's right in between the two, staff believes the five-plus acres with the agricultural land preservation meets the intent of the plan. This case again was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters, has the same five rezoning criteria. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. We are requesting a 15-foot recreational easement be placed within the 30-foot utility easement along the front of the property line. We did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and each of these lots would be rezoned to R5, which is Residential Ranchette, which is our current zoning for lots that are between 5 and 10 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning preliminary and final plat with a couple of conditions you can see in Exhibit A. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and the applicant is present as well.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Does the applicant care to comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes it's a little hard to say because half the people have masks, so it's hard to say who says what. Very well. Are there any other members of the public who'd care to comment on this particular item, or these particular three items? Seeing none. Once again, it seems to have no controversy attached to it, so if it's a consensus of the commission, we will put these three items on for consent with the approved box checked. Is that working? Can we use?
It does, thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, very well. 2021-255, 256, and 257 will be on next week's consent agenda with the box approved checked. That brings us to 21, excuse me, 2021-25A, 259. Just those two, our companion items? Very well, please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-258 and 2021-259, again, a request to approve a subdivision for Yosemite, is it Yosemite or Yosemiteite?
Yes.
For Yosemite West, again, Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Jones for further comments.
Please proceed, and do feel free to correct the administrator on any pronunciation errors, Mr. Jones.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager, and that was brutal. So, this is a, and now I'm sidetracked. So, this is a proposal for a rezoning and final plat. The reason this one's not a preliminary is this property has been platted in the past, so it's a replat, so we just require the rezoning and the final plat. It's roughly 24, 23, 24 acres to be subdivided into a roughly 15-acre lot that you can see here as Lot 5A, and a roughly eight-acre lot that you can see as 5B. This is A Highway just to the west. A lot of people are familiar with the Oak Brook subdivision. This is Oak Brook right here on the south side of 136, and then Plattsburgh Road would just be a little bit farther to the east. So, we're south of 92 between A and Plattsburgh Road. So, this is in the urban services tier, so this one's a little bit unique too, because the urban services tier indicates that we should do a 10-plus acre lot in this area. And obviously, I just told you we have an eight-acre lot. So, when we have an application that is something smaller than what the comp plan calls for, we look at several things. We look at those five rezoning criteria that I talk about all the time that are included in each transmittal, and then we look at the surrounding area. So, I'm going to turn off the aerial and turn on the zoning layer, because that'll point out some of the lot sizes in this area. One of the other exceptions in the comprehensive plan is in the urban services tier, if a property is within a mile of a city, we can reach out to that city and they can grant other exemptions to the 10-acre requirement. Now, this one's far enough outside town that it's not within that one-mile tier, so we could not use that exception. But if I zoom out here a little bit, there's quite a mix of different sizes, but this is an area that's been pretty heavily developed with some interior-streated subdivisions, and there's quite a few smaller lots in this area. So, if I, and I won't spend too much time doing this, but I just want to show some of the smaller lots, and, you know, this is part of the reason that staff and also Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval even though it doesn't meet that 10-acre minimum. So, you can see Oak Brook is here, a lot of these lots are an acre, two acres, even smaller. These lots here are about three acres, and if I go directly across the street, we've got a three-acre lot, a five-acre lot, you know, there's some bigger ones as well, so this one's nine to 10, 10, so it's quite a combination of different sizes. Staff feels this fits the area even though it doesn't meet the 10-acre minimum, and it fits in with the surrounding properties. This case was also noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. The applicant received all their outside agency approvals. There is a plaque clay electric easement that runs through the property that is noted on the plat, and we did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will show you, I think down here we'll have hopefully that easement. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to approve the rezoning and final with a four-to-zero vote with two conditions, and then this is the 20-foot easement that kind of runs north and south through the property that obviously they just would not be able to build on. There is an existing house on the 15-acre lot, and we would allow just one additional house on the eight-acre lot. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you. So, what you're saying is that because it's an 8.12-acre lot, it does not fit the criteria, but it is consistent with the surrounding community. Is that kind of a distillation of what you're saying?
Yes, sir, and I would say the comp plan is more of a guide than a strict rule, so each property's a little bit unique. Generally, we hold people to that minimum, but each property's a little bit different. But I believe, yes, it does not meet that guide of the comp plan, but it does match the changing conditions in this area.
Very well. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm going to missed it. Mr. Jones, was there any opposition to this?
We have not received any opposition to this.
That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions, thank you.
If the applicant is present and would care to comment, they certainly are welcome to do so at this time?
No comments.
No comment from the applicant. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to comment on this item, or these two items, I should say? Okay. I'm a little bit torn on this, actually. I don't have any objection to us going forward, it's not that I have any objections, but my concern is because it is, it is not directly within the criteria, I'm a little inclined to consider putting it on regular just because it's outside the parameters. That doesn't necessarily indicate a negative thought, and it doesn't indicate that, it just, because it's outside of those parameters, I kind of think in terms of giving it a little bit extra consideration. Is that acceptable?
Sounds reasonable to me, yeah.
Very well. With that, we will put items 2021-258 and 259 on for next week's regular agenda. That brings us to another grouping of companion items, 2021-260, 261, and 262. Please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-260 and 2021-261 and 2021-262, again, a request to approve a subdivision, Lillian's Landing, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Jones, Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a rezoning preliminary and final plat for a plat called Lillian's Landing. I've got it pulled up on the screen, and I'm going to zoom out a little bit. This is a three-lot subdivision. Each lot is roughly six acres. It's on the corner of 116th and Nation Road. It is just west of the Clay County Highway Department, kind of between, this is I-35 to the west here, and then if I zoom out farther, you'll see 33 Highway is located to the east, if my map cooperates. So, here's 33 Highway, here's the highway department, and here's the property that we're talking about. It is roughly 18 acres, has one house on the property currently. Proposal to split it into three, which would allow one house per lot for the two lots that do not have a house. This one again is in the urban services tier, so we're talking about a 10-plus acre area. So, again, technically this does not, this doesn't meet the guidance of the comprehensive plan. So, again, I'm going to zoom out and show you some of the surrounding area, because initially this case was submitted to Planning and Zoning staff as a four-lot subdivision with a 3.8-acre lot, and I think it was a 4.2-acre lot, so one additional lot with each lot being a little bit smaller. That went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff had recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny that application. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to deny that application. At that point, the applicant withdrew their application and then resubmitted with the three-lot subdivision with the six-acre lots. So, both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt this better met the surrounding area. You see, we have a bunch of roughly five to six-acre lots across the street on the south side. Now, there are some larger lots here as well, roughly 71, and then there's a three-acre lot on the corner, some nines and tens in that area, so not, it's pretty similar to, you know, the case we just heard, rather than it being a two-lot subdivision, this has three lots. But again, staff looked at those five rezoning criteria and the surrounding area, and we recommended approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to zero to recommend approval as well. This case was also noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. The applicant did receive all their outside agency approvals. I'll zoom in on the existing house, because that is a unique part of this plat as well, is a lot of these older houses were built really close to the streets, to the street. This one's no different, so it does not meet our setback requirements, but it can be considered a non-conforming structure, which means it's allowed to exist the way it is now. They cannot extend or add on to the house that would make it closer to the street, and it would be allowed to exist until it's damaged up to 50% of its value before the damage occurred. So, if it would have a fire or a flood and it's valued, or it's damaged by 50% of its value, then at that point, the house would have to be demolished and a new house built. Otherwise, it's allowed to exist as it currently is. We did receive opposition during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with discussion being revolving around the additional traffic this would create, the two additional homes that would be in the area, the size of the lots, whether this, allowing these six-acre lots would spur other development in this area, and whether this subdivision would make it more likely that this area be annexed into the city of Liberty. The two folks that we had oppose were concerned that they were going to be annexed into Liberty. As I stated earlier, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to zero to recommend approval with the one condition in Exhibit A. I am happy to answer any questions, and then the applicant is present as well.
Thank you very much. Yeah, once again, this does kind of go beyond the criteria. It seems to me that the distance that the existing house has from the street is, I guess I would think of it in terms of being grandfathered in, and then you outlined what the procedure would be if there were damage to the house of one sort or another, so I feel pretty satisfied on that point, I think. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, no.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Is the applicant here, and would they care to comment?
I'm Luke Owen, and I'm the applicant, and I just wanted to comment since we did receive opposition at our meeting from the neighbors. I submitted this originally as four tracts of land. At that time, our reasoning behind that was that there were already five other tracts that were smaller than what we were asking for in that area, and we had a good discussion at that meeting in July. The opposition seemed to be concerned with the traffic going down Nation Road, which is a gravel road, and additional houses in the area. We went back to the drawing board and resubmitted this as the 6.2-acre tracts of land. At that time, I pointed out that we are now larger than 16 tracts of land on that same street. The track just to the north of us is 4.8 acres. The track just south of us is 3.08. There's tracks all the way down to 0.9 acres, just a little bit east of us in there, and the concern about it was coming from houses that are smaller than six acres, what we're asking for. We, when we redrew this as three lots, we moved one of the lots to the east of it, so there's one driveway added on 116th Street, and we put Lot 1 up there, so there's one driveway being added on Nation Road. I talked to the highway department, they've done traffic studies, and the average daily traffic out there was 120 cars on Nation, on 116th Street, and only 39 cars on Nation Road. I asked them if there's any improvements planned for Nation Road, because it's gravel, and I know that the county's trying to get away from gravel, and they said there's not enough cars on that road, nor is there enough potential for cars on that road that we are inclined to do anything. I asked- I asked them, can we do any improvements on that road to make it, bring it up to current standards and not gravel? And they said, don't do any improvements on that road. We will leave it as gravel, it's unimproved. We're not spending any money out there, there's not traffic to warrant doing that. And so we also checked with the Water Department, we checked with the Sewer Department, or the Health Department. And so that, this is what we came up with. In response to the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, it seems to have a lot of deficiencies in it. I think we can all agree that we're in a different place today than we were in 2008, before the financial crisis and COVID, and a lot of political divisions now. I don't know that the Comprehensive Plan would have been, would be done the same way today, but I would seem to think that it's like every plan you make, where you make the plan, and then instantly you realize the plan has deficiencies, and the plan has all the what-if scenarios that come up. This seems to fall under one of those, where this this urban services tier is set up for moderate-density development with municipal-level services and up to four units per acre. We are not asking for four units per acre, we do not want four units per acre. Our goal is to provide two R5-zoned six-and-a-half-acre lots for people to build their dream homes on. And so while I can understand that, as a neighbor out there, you would be concerned that Liberty is going to annex it, I don't know that this property should shoulder the weight of Liberty annexing this entire area. And as I pointed out at the last meeting, when a city looks at annexation, they have to consider tax revenue. And a lot of mid-sized acreage tracts are a lot less desirable than 70 to 90-acre tracts that are prime spots for subdivisions to go in. And so there's a, there's a couple of those on this street. I would be more concerned about those getting split up and considered for annexation than I would all of the five-to-10-acre tracts on this land. So I, we respect the neighbors that, you know, that we work around. And we know that anytime there's any kind of a subdivision or a lot split, there's always unknowns as to what's going to be built there. I think Clay County is very specific about what types of properties can be built on all the different zoning levels. And I have stood with homeowners on close to 100 different properties like this that I've built houses on for them. I have a meeting tomorrow with homeowners on 120th Street on those five, 10-acre tracts that were just done over there. And so these six-acre tracts of land are ideal locations for people to build, build houses. And if the intent of the 2008 Comprehensive Plan is to give some clarity and to orderly develop Clay County, I don't feel like this in any way deviates from that. And I feel like the opposition that we received is a bit of the do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do agenda here, because we are, we are larger now than 16 tracts of land on that same street. And so that's why I'm just trying to explain this, because we have that opposition. I respect neighbors, I respect everyone's view on it. But I feel like we're trying to present something that's orderly, it's organized, and is a good, good spot of land for two additional families to build their houses.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant from the commission?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to comment on these items? Seeing none. We are in kind of a similar position as Mr. Jones had pointed out with the last lot. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any thoughts on rather regular or consent?
I think I'll take your recommendation, much like we did with the last grouping, is probably just putting on regular, so we can look at.
So, regular agenda with the mark, marking the box approved?
Yes.
Very well. That seems to be the consensus of the commission. So 2021-260, 261, and 262 will be on regular agenda for our next meeting, with the box of four approved indicated. Thank you very much. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 38. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 Ordinance 38 is to set the tax levies for 2021, and the auditor, Hurlbert, is here for additional comments.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Before I begin on 2021 Ordinance 38, just want to give a thanks to the Assessor's Office and the Clerk's Office in getting these assessed valuation numbers out. It's a big job at the core of what the, what the county does. And then after this, of course, the Collector's Office goes to work with the bills. So I want to spend some brief time on those numbers before I begin as well, on the valuation numbers. Essentially, after TIF, you know, last year, we were $4.6 billion. And then 2021, which it is an odd year, so it's a reassessment year, but nevertheless, we saw a 16% increase of $5.4 billion. Without TIF, it's from $4.9 billion to $5.6 billion, or a 14.4% increase. So the county's growing, and I think our census numbers lay that out as well as the third fastest-growing county in Missouri. So I just want to give that kind of high-level overview. But let's go into 2021 Ordinance 38. Before you is just the county government levies. And we have two in operation currently, the general fund levy and the road and bridge levy. As my request for commission action essentially outlined, we have to stay in compliance with the pro forma calculations provided by the state auditor's office, and we have to comply with the Hancock Amendment and Article 10 of the Missouri Constitution, which basically says that your revenues from property taxes can't grow faster than the state tax commission's rate of inflation, which they gave this year. And it is in the documents that were before you at 1.4% when they set that. So that's a factor into that. In addition, I'll mention that the general fund property tax levy is very unique as well. It's not just complying with Hancock Amendment, it's also our sales tax general, our general sales tax at half a cent. When that was passed, basically requires that we have to reduce the maximum ceiling of property tax revenues that we can collect by half of our sales tax collections in a given year, and account for true-ups in any given year from prior years from what we calculated then. So, all that being said, what you essentially land at is our maximum ceiling for the general fund levy is 0.0338 per $100 of assessed valuation. And then the county road and bridge ceiling is 0.0697. And that is what we would request. You know, following next week, we have to have a public hearing, is required to do that. And so we've queued that up, we have to advertise that hearing in the paper. That is going into tomorrow's Courier Tribune, Friday's Excelsior Springs Standard, it used to be just a standard, but we added the Courier Tribune to get wider, wider awareness this year. And so that's being done. And that is essentially it. I'm happy to answer any questions involved with that.
Thank you. Could you tell us historically where we are as far as the levies go? Like the previous setting of the levies, what that amount was?
Sure. So by, once it was passed by the voters, the maximum per law is, you know, 35, so .35. And we're practically, it's almost gone essentially for the general fund levy, and it won't be much longer based on that sales tax reduction we have to do. So that's for perspective, you know, we've come that far down. And whenever you take a voluntary reduction in an even year, that further limits your ceiling. And we're in an odd year this year. And then for the, for the road and bridge, same story there. But, you know, it's, the road and bridge should generate about the same revenue as we've, you know, outlined in comparison, you know, based on increased valuation. It just, it just, it evens out. But the general fund levy is a little different, because we have that sales tax, you know, reduction. So, of course, we have more sales tax to make up for any reduction in property tax revenue from that.
So at the end of the day, I mean, the purpose is to essentially hold the people harmless, in other words, to keep revenues pretty well intact, pretty much at the same rough levels. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say so.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, I want to thank you all. Like you, you mentioned the Clerk's Office and the Assessment Department. You guys have worked very hard on this, and I, for one, appreciate all your guys' work in putting all this together. And I look forward to one day where we can actually have the county general be at zero. So I love it, let's keep going down, keep growing Clay County, so.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just similar sentiment in terms of thanking our assessor and our auditor, as well as the Clerk's Office for making these numbers all come together. And I'm glad that the county's growing, and obviously, property values are going up, as everybody is probably aware. And I'm glad that we're in a good revenue situation here in Clay County. I think that's likely to continue, and that's good for the citizens. Thank you.
Yes, I think we're all very thankful for all the offices that participated and their respective staffs. Even with just the, you know, the brief presentation you gave us, it's certainly indicative that this is not a simple process, and that there's a lot going on behind the scenes. So we certainly appreciate the hard work done by staff to come up with these numbers and to keep us compliant with the various statutes and laws, so. Are there any members of the group, are there members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none. I do have one question, since this is going to come up for a public hearing next week, I believe. Is that what, is that correct? Yeah, I thought it was.
No, it does require a public hearing. So if citizens want to come and make comment, I have invited, on the next item, we're going to talk about outside agencies that are under county.
Yeah, what I was verifying, I think, and this is maybe more of a council question, I wanted to verify that first, but it's more of a question to council. Does this, do we still go with the regular consent, or is this somehow rolled into the public hearing?
My recommendation would be on the regular, would be a public hearing in addition to that.
Okay, so it would be in addition to.
I assume it's going to be next Wednesday?
Yes.
So it'll be before, yeah, we'll do it under Section 9, or.
Very good. In case it didn't come up on the recording, council had indicated that it was his recommendation that this be on the regular agenda, which I think is really pretty obvious. So yes, that's absolutely true. And that we would be taking this up on regular agenda, and we would also be doing the public hearing. I just wanted to make sure they didn't somehow get rolled together. I was pretty sure of that, but I didn't want to have to walk it back, having asked for the wrong thing. With that, I think on the recommendation of council, I think we put 2021 Ordinance 38 on for regular agenda next week, is that acceptable?
Absolutely, yeah.
Very well. 2021 Ordinance 38 will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 39, Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, as previously stated, Ordinance 38 was for the county tax levies. 2021 Ordinance 39 is for the setting of outside tax levies for 2021. And again, the auditor has additional comments.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Yes, again, Commissioner Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor. So for 2021 Ordinance 39, these are for our essentially component units with share, that share a county-wide assessed valuation in determining their levy. And you appoint their, their board. So, you know, with those, it's a similar thing. You know, valuations went up, so therefore, the levies went down. But it produces the same amount of revenue, no more than that inflation figure. I invited those representatives to come make comment. You know, today, they will get those, they'll sign these, as we've done in years past, has been our precedent. And then they're welcome to come as well to that public hearing and make further comment if they would like to do so.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No questions.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Obviously, we would repeat our gratitude for the various offices and staffs for, again, compiling this information for us to be able to consider. Are there any comments from anyone from the public? Seeing none. Once again, it seems that 2021 Ordinance 39 would be appropriate for our regular agenda. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Very well, 2021 Ordinance 39 will appear on next week's regular agenda. Thank you. That brings us to 2021-244. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-244 is to request to approve the apportionment of the fines, interest, and escrow of Clay County. And the Treasurer is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Treasurer Bob Nance, I'm here to ask for your approval of spending $593,000, or I say spending, giving that to the schools. That's money that we have received for fines, interest, and tax sales. And, you know, this is done by the enrollment in schools. And we probably have nine or 10 schools that we send this money to. And this is the time of year we do this, because the state requires by statute that these schools be paid by the 30th of September.
Okay. And did I understand correctly that they're basically paid on a per, by the number of students that they have? Is that the way?
That is correct, enrollment numbers. And that comes through the Clerk's Office.
Very good.
Clerk helps prepare this.
Is there any, are there any questions of the Treasurer? Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, but thank you all for putting this together.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, just thank you to the Treasurer. We've got great public schools here in Clay County, very fortunate, and glad that we're able to chip in a little bit more to help.
That's great. And, you know, if you compare that to last year, last year was $534,000 compared to $593,000.
Thank you.
Thank you for that additional information, that's, it's good to know. Are there any comments from anyone from the public on this item? Seeing none, I would recommend, if it's the will of the commission, to put 2021-244 on for regular next week?
Sounds good to me.
Very good. 2021-244 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-270. Mr. Administrator? I thank you, Mr. Treasurer, by the way.
Commissioners, 2021-270 is a request to approve a MoDOT funding grant application. And Deputy Administrator Walters from Highway is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Carl Walters, Deputy Director of Administrations. This is a MoDOT grant funding application brought to you for a signature for the 2022 funding of a grant. We, it's a 90-10 grant. We would only be $394,000 for the resurfacing of the runway of the airport.
Okay. Are there any questions of the Deputy Administrator? Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, just in terms of how often this kind of project needs to be done, could you give me some, give us some sense of that?
Airport was built in 97. The asphalt was then put in. We had an extension done to it, now we're at 5,500 feet on the airport, with 100 feet wide. We had a refurbish of the runway, I believe in '08, between '08 and 2013. I was trying to find that information. So there's not been any cap or anything put on that asphalt. And now we have funding that is available through a grant to turn around and actually do it, because it's in need of it, because it is coming, you know, finally coming apart. So this will be the first cap put on that runway.
Okay, very good. And so the state is going to put in, or MoDOT is going to put in about $3.5 million, it looks like?
Yeah.
And about three, well, it's a, seems like a good opportunity for Clay County, for sure.
Exactly.
So I'm grateful that that grant came through.
Yep.
So, thank you.
I had a follow-up question, that was kind of spurred by Commissioner Carpenter's comment. That is, you were saying this was the first cap to be put on this runway?
Yes.
How many caps does a runway have before? I mean, that's really a very far-down-the-road question, because it'll be a long time before we need to do that again. But I'm just curious as to how often you can cap a runway.
Well, basically, you can't cap them too many times, because they'll have to do a geological testing on that. The reason why we're getting the application started now. They'll have to do some testing and stuff on that to make sure that the cap is going to be feasible, or if they have to turn around and mill that out of there to. Or if they have to turn around and mill that out of there to turn around, determine where that asphalt gradation is. So they'll know what they'll have to turn around and perform on it. So to say that is probably, is kind of throw it up in the air when they do the testing.
But still, I mean, we're talking about the first cap since it was put in there.
When it was first put in in 97.
The question is not going to have very much relevance for some years, but I was just curious if I would ask.
Right. Because you have to meet, doing highways versus airplanes, you know, landing and stuff like that, there's a different criteria that has to be met for FAA for the asphalt versus just going out and milling and doing highways. So you have to meet that criteria of oil mixture, rock, and things for airplanes. So you don't get that deterioration and stuff from right now, that deterioration of that asphalt and the cracks and stuff. And so we have to go out and check it every once in a while, make sure we don't have any crumbs on there so that the airplanes with their propellers and stuff don't pick it up and tear it up because that's costly.
One of the other things is we have a fairly long runway.
Right.
And that indicates that we could take larger planes. So that would certainly cause, you know, more, more wear, which makes this an even more timely thing for us to be doing. But, but the fact that we do have a longer runway, I think, gives us a competitive advantage over some of our neighbors.
Exactly.
So I think we're very thankful to have that, that length of runway because it, it helps us.
Yep.
All right. This looks like just the acceptance of a grant.
The dedication, yeah.
I don't know that, oh, is there any comment from the public before we proceed? Seeing none. If it's just the acceptance of a grant, perhaps consent would be our best way to go.
You want to do consent, you said?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that doesn't, if I understand correctly, this doesn't, this doesn't involve the expenditure of funds.
Okay.
Is that, Mr. Administrator, is that?
Well, at some stage of the game, you'll spend about $390,000. I don't know if there's an anticipation that that will come back. I, I think this is one, it's kind of splitting hairs. I don't know that there's a bad place for this to be either way.
I see the Deputy Administrator's back. Your thinking is kind of where I was going was I assumed that when we actually go forward with this at that point, then we, it would come before the commission, then it would be a regular agenda type item. Mr., or Deputy Administrator, did you have some thoughts?
Yes, we, we've, we've asked for this in the budget for the year of 2022. So we've already prepared for this and, and doing this. So we knew this was coming for the application. So we've already set this up for the budget year.
Okay. I really, yeah, I think you're right. It, it could go either way. If, you know, maybe perhaps we should err on the side of caution and just put it on regular then. If, I, I don't really have a, a strong inclination on this. If either of the other two commissioners do, I'd be willing to.
Well, let's just do regular. I think it would be fine. It should be pretty straightforward next week.
And it gives us another chance to talk about a great airport. Very well. 2021-270 will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-243. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-243 is a request to approve RFP number 5221 and a professional services contract with Citywide Facility Solutions and Hygiene's Janitorial for Custodial Services. Deputy Administrator Kuntz with Facilities is here for further comment.
Please proceed.
Hi, good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator for Facilities. Yes, we have been using a cooperative agreement for our custodial services. And we did not feel like that encompassed everything that we needed to do to keep our buildings up. So we went out for bid, and we included language to make sure that we could get the windows washed at least once a year and to include carpet cleaning as part of their normal scope of work, clean up a coffee spill in the hallway. We had four people, four vendors respond, and we have chosen to split this between two different vendors and divide up the buildings among these two vendors. And we are just asking for your approval for us to move through with some new custodial contractors.
Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none.
I might add that it's only coincidental, I'm sure, that all of our windows were washed today.
I was wondering why it was so bright in here.
I thought the sun just shone a little brighter in Clay County today. With that.
Well, just to clarify, we, we were paying the current vendor to do that because that was not included in their contract. And the windows were a little bad.
I see. With that, is it the, what is the sense of the commission as far as regular or consent?
Well, I, I'm fine with consent contracts, so.
Okay. We seem to have arrived at a consensus that 2021-243 will appear on next week's consent agenda. Thank you. That brings us to two, excuse me, 2021-245. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-245 is a request to approve equipment support agreements with Tipton Systems. This is a request from Parks and Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here for additional comment.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. You recently approved a purchase for what they call a cash discriminator, which is basically a cash counting machine, and for a check reader machine for our Parks operation for slip holder renewals, camping, anything, any type of thing, the fees, entry fees in. So we could count the cash and auto-record the checks as we run them through the scanner. This would approve a maintenance service agreement to come clean the machines and to do any software upgrades for any programs that might come through the year to keep our machines current and up to date to do what we need them to do.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No, thank you.
Seeing none. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. If it's the consensus of the commission, 2021-245 on next week's regular agenda?
I'm going to that next.
Very well. 2021-245 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-246. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-246 is a request to accept or approve a donation of a framed charcoal drawing of Mary James Barr as a young lady. Additional information is Mary James Barr is the daughter of Jesse James. And Deputy Administrator Kuntz is here for additional comments.
Please proceed.
Hi, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this and actually the following one also is for approval of a donation to our historic sites, the Jesse James Farm. And we do have our Historic Sites Manager, Beth Beckett, here. If anyone had any more questions or wanted to hear a little more history about these pieces and how they are coming to us. This was very nicely being donated by Betty Barr for our charcoal drawing.
That's very generous. Of course, we appreciate the donation, and it certainly adds to the, the history of the county. Do we have a, an idea of what era, what, what timeframe this was actually rendered, when it was drawn?
I'm going to defer that to our, our Historic Sites Manager, and we'll let Beth Beckett answer for us.
Great.
Elizabeth Beckett, Historic Sites Manager. I believe the drawing of Mary was probably done about the time she was a high school graduate, and that would have been about 1899.
Okay. And it looks like it's in really good shape. I mean, just judging by the, by the reproduction here.
Yes, it is.
Are there any questions of, on this?
No questions, I think you.
Okay. Also, I take note that we have a letter of appreciation drafted that's attached to this, which certainly I think is very appropriate, that we express our, our gratitude for this donation. It's, like I said, I think it'd be a great addition. One other quick question, I guess, and what is the size of this? Because it's kind of hard to tell from scale. I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep pulling you up for questions, but.
The size was on the gift form, it was about 20. I don't have that in front of me.
Third page, 22 and a half inches by 28 and a half inches.
I'm sorry, I must have gone right by that. That's a good-sized piece of work. There it is, 22 and a half by 28 and a half. Very well. I think we can certainly put this on consent if that is the.
Oh, for sure.
2021-246 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-247. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, continuing that theme, 2021-247 is to request to approve a donation of a copy of the National Police Gazette, a newspaper dated April 29, 1882. Again, Deputy Administrator Kuntz and Parks Director Beckett are here to comment.
Please proceed.
Yes, hi. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this is also another donation from Robin Edelstein. I found this one particularly interesting because I didn't know there was a police Gazette newspaper during that era. And it's wonderful that these people have this history to be able to share with us. And again, if you have any specific questions, we have Beth Beckett here that can address those questions for you.
Once again, it's, it's nice to see more because I think people, I think it becomes more real when people can see the actual visuals and see something that was, in the previous case, either rendered or in this case, published during that historical period. I think it really has a lot of significance. It really, to see something that was actually contemporary to that time, I think is a, a good aid for people who are interested in, in studying and appreciating our history. Are there any question or comments from the commissioners?
No questions, other than that this, the cover of this police Gazette looks like quite a, quite a thing and quite a historical document. So I'm glad it will be added to the collection.
Yeah, they were quite rollicking at that time, it looks like.
Interesting picture.
Are there any comments from anyone from the public? Seeing none. If it's the consent of the commission, we will go with, with consent agenda for 2021-247?
Yeah.
Very well. 2021-247 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-271. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-271 is a request to approve a donation of office furnishings for Sheriff's Department Captain Franks memorandum to three surrounding counties. Deputy Administrator Kuntz is here with further comment.
Please proceed.
Hi, thank you. Once again, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this is, comes from a project that we've been involved with for the Sheriff's Department. This particularly was the detention administrative staffs that include their inmate classification division. And we had approximately 18 workstations, 18 different areas that were involved in tearing down furniture, reorganizing how they're set up over there. And they also purchased some new furniture. We have been busy moving furniture around and trying to find the best location for it. For example, part of their furniture has moved over to the Rooney Justice Center for a staffing project that we had for Judge Davis. We also have our assessor here in this building that is moving around some of his staff. Not always do the cubicle partitions work effectively for interacting with coworkers and public. And so there were some desks that came out of the Sheriff's Department that we are relocating to the assessor. Even with that, we have several old cubicle-type partitions that have been over in the detention facility for many years. Just because of the nature of their job, the gear, their handcuffs, things get snagged and scratched rather badly in their everyday activities. Captain Franks was recently at a seminar and was sharing that we had some things, that they were getting some new furniture. And we had some takers that were more than willing to take some of our old stuff off our hands, which saves us from trying to store it. I do not foresee us wanting to reutilize any of these old cubicle partitions. And the few desk pieces that are left are well-loved through the years. So we are asking if we might be able to relocate these and donate these to other agencies to help them out.
Thank you. Yes, my understanding that, that in some cases, storage of, of some of the materials that we have, some of the equipment we have is becoming more and more of a problem.
That is correct.
And so this really does not only benefit the, the counties that we're talking about, Holt Christian and St. Clair, but also it helps to alleviate a problem that we have. So it's kind of a win-win if I'm, if, that's the way I'm looking at it anyway.
Absolutely. And if someone can use it, and if they're not going to be used here, there's always the potential that they can just wind up going to the landfill. And that's really not what we would want to do with it. So we have an opportunity to share what we have.
Any comments or questions? Commissioner Thompson?
No, no questions. But I'm, I'm glad we're able to get some stuff back out there and get a little more life out of it from other counties.
No questions, thank you. Makes a lot of sense to me.
Very well. Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none. I think that 2021-271 would work on our consent agenda if that is the will of the commission.
Agreed.
It seems to be. So 2021-271 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 37. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 Ordinance 37 is a request to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year. This is from administration. Essentially, the issue is we have depleted most of the election funds for this particular calendar year. And of course, we have an election scheduled for November. And so this is simply in order to provide funding for that election by moving some money around from one account to the other.
Very well.
The auditor's in the House. If he's got additional comments, elaborate or anything like that.
Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. Only thing I'll add, just, just to clarify. So that revenue line is essentially, we had some projects closed in the Shoal Creek Tiff. So we've seen that money come back with closeouts. So that's what that revenue is. That's how we were able to fund it.
That's good news because, yeah, it sounds like we've got enough economic growth to where it is helping to offset that cost through the Shoal Creek Tiff issue. Are there any questions from the commission?
No questions.
This is the expenditure of money, so I think a regular agenda would be our appropriate move if that is good with the commissioner. It appears to be. 2021 Ordinance 37 will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to our last issue, which is 2021-242. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-2242 is to appoint members to a Clay County redistricting commission, another commission action. And I'll turn the floor back over to the Presiding Commissioner.
Thank you very much. We have, since this was submitted, some changes that were made. I don't know if the, what is in our packet is the one that was the previous version. We have a revised version, there we are, that I would like to submit to the, to the commission. Once again, because it involves something that I think is certainly important, my, my request will be that we put it on for regular for next week. I want to make sure the commissioners have a chance, and the public as well, of course, to look through the names and, and to vet them as thoroughly as, as they feel they need to. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions, other than appreciate everybody working together on this. In terms of, we'll retain the ability, if a commissioner wanted to offer an amendment to this, we would have the ability to do that at next week's commission hearing.
Actually, no. Because, if I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Counselor. As far as amendments go, I don't, because this is the, the purview of the presiding to nominate. So I don't think a, an amendment to remove a name and put another one would be in order. Am I mistaken?
No, I think, I think that's right. So in these situations on appointments, your role is to nominate. And, and the commission's role is to approve or not. But it, it would be, say, more akin to like a presidential judicial appointment. The president appoints, and the vote goes up or down. If it goes down, then the president does another appointment. So I think it would be essentially like that.
As long as we have you here, I'd like, also like to get clarification because when we started this process some time ago, one of the things that I did not, that I wanted to get some clarification on, and that is the timeline we are working under. According to our new. According to our new constitution, there is a specific timeline from when the census of information gets to us to when we have to seat our redistricting commission. Could you give us any information on that?
Yeah, that's 60 days from when the 2020 census is completed. I think those numbers were delivered August 12th. I'm not, I'm still trying to verify that as far as population, because they do it in different buckets. So I would, my preference, of course, I guess, would be if we pass it next week, we're definitely in good shape on time. Beyond that, I'm still trying to get an exact date as to when I think those population numbers came out.
Very well. Did you have any other questions, Commissioner?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, thank you.
By the way, I have not made a decision, but as with the bicentennial commission, it'd be my intention to recommend to the commission a chair, just for the purposes of conducting, as I say, opening the meeting. Then it'd be my anticipation that the commission would, as one of their first orders of business, select a chair from among their number, but just to make sure that we are able to start the meeting in an orderly fashion, and then it would be, of course, a decision of the body as far as who they would, who they would select as their chair. So with that, again, it's my recommendation that we put this on regular for any number of reasons, but I do want to make sure that we have these names out there. Also want to, I also appreciate the fact that I've been getting some input on this, so certainly I appreciate hearing about, you know, recommendations as we go along. While it is in the job description of the presiding commissioner to nominate, certainly the ability to be able to get views as this process goes forward is very valuable. And as we've just kind of closed in the loop, the other requirement constitutionally for this kind of an action is that I consult with the administrator. I have consulted with the administrator, and so I believe up to this point, we are in compliance with our constitution. I point that out, not so much because there was a question, we wouldn't be, but because this is a new process, I think it's, I think it behooves us to, to have a little maybe closer attention to the process, so that we make sure any precedent is consistent with our constitution. So if it's the, if it's the consensus for you, we'll put 2021-242 on for regular?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Very well. That concludes our agenda, our regular agenda for today. Does anybody want to take on the rather daunting task of making a motion related to putting these items on either regular or consent agenda for next week?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I move that the following items from today's agenda be put on the regular agenda for next Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. That would be 2021-265, 266, 2021 ordnance 40, 2021-248, 258, 259, 260, 261, 262, 2021 ordinances 38 and 39, 2021-244, 270, 245, ordnance 37, and 2021-242.
Okay.
With the remaining items on next week's consent agenda.
Motion has been made? Yes, I was very impressed, I was following, you got them all right. Motion has been made, and I will not restate the motion in its entirety, but motion has been made to put items on regular and consent agenda items as expressed by Commissioner Carpenter. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes?
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our regular agenda. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holders who would like to comment on any items that did not appear on the agenda today? Seeing none. Are there any agen, agencies that would care to comment on any items not appearing on today's agenda? Seeing none. Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments?
Just a couple of comments. One is, and this is primarily for those people listening, in addition to those in the room, it, I just wanted to inform everybody that the construction site, also often referred to as that hole at Brighton and 152, has now been filled. Whereas in the process of being filled, the fence is down and it's being restored to its original condition, as we sit here. Secondly, a reminder to anybody in the room and also listening that this is the weekend of Fall Fest and Liberty, and so as we speak, parking lots are being closed around the square and around the four or five-block area of the square, much like it has been in years past. And so those parking lots will be inaccessible the rest of the day, and tomorrow, and Friday, and through the weekend for Fall Fest. Just, that's just kind of an FYI. Be prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Thompson?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just that today is, in fact, the first day of fall, so I'm looking forward to Fall Fest. I will be there, be, do some parading, it's going to be a good time, I'm sure, and look forward to our fall commission sessions together.
Thank you, Commissioner. Certainly, the weather is going to be more amenable. Well, I guess, reflecting on the comments of the administrator, I can take the shovel out of the back of my car, I don't have to worry about going over there and throwing dirt into that hole, so we're in good shape.
You may put it away.
Thank you, sir. With that, that's, that's the only real comment that I have. That brings us to approval of the minutes of previous sessions. We have two sets of minutes for approval, one for August 25, 2021, 6:00 p.m., the second set for September 3, 2021, 9:00 a.m. Is there a motion related to approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 25 and September 3 as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the August 25, 2021, 6:00 p.m. minutes. Discussion? Mr. Commissioner?
No discussion.
Very well. You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes?
Yes.
That brings us to September 3, 2021, 9:00 a.m. minutes. Is there a motion related?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I made a motion to do the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Sometimes you're, you're a little soft.
I lumped, I lumped them together.
Very good.
I can remake that motion if you need me to.
That gets us out of here a moment or two earlier. Thank you. Are there any written reports?
No.
Okay, no written reports. There are no executive sessions for today. That brings us to adjournment. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thanks for being here, Jason. Just a moment.
Don't worry.
First time I've been to a...
Yeah.